I understand. So, good morning. Barbara Canales, Nuances County Judge. Thank you for joining us this morning. It's nine o'clock and I wanted to host this press briefing because we now have, I guess, 24 hours behind us. On Monday morning was our first full day without Hurricane Hannah or any of its weather effects in the coastal bend. And so yesterday, we took that opportunity to begin the process of recovery. And I'm joined here today by important people to me and to this community who are also equally involved and will assist Nuaces County in the recovery. And I'd like to introduce them shortly. I want to have first the opportunity to go over some of the highlights and then I'll introduce them and then we will come back and wrap up. First and foremost, Hurricane Hannah was a Category One hurricane that made landfall 60 miles south of Corpus Christi, but we were on that northwest quadrant of this storm. And what I know about hurricanes is that you don't want to be on that northwest quadrant of the storm because it brings storm surge with it. And so while this was not a tremendous wind or water event primarily, although there was wind and there was water, it was not an excessive wind or water event like we've seen with other storms throughout Texas, like in Harvey. But in this storm, storm surge was the story. And so I want to give you a little bit of a profile about some of the damages that Nuaces County sustained. And we're going to spend most of our time talking about coastal damage and in particular, damage to Bob Hall Pier. I'm also going to show off some small graphics here, some visuals, because I think that you're going to want to understand what exactly has been damaged. And also, we're going to be talking about safety around the area where damage has occurred. In order to assist me, I have Scott Cross here, Director of Coastal Parks. I was actually in the room in EOC early that morning when Scott came in and together we watched the visuals on the Weather Channel of that pier really getting beaten up. And I have to tell you, somebody that loves what he does so much is, it's heartbreaking to watch that person have to see their infrastructure that they care for, they maintain, they nurture, they advocate for, they take care of people every single day who want to access it. And to actually see the pain that it caused, to watch it getting beaten up, really is a testament to the passion that we have in Nuaces County and everybody that serves here in the county. So we, let me kind of give you a background of where we were. So we were in the fifth month of our other disaster, that hurricane that's known as COVID-19. And of course, we were at the high point of our spikes of cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. Everything about the moment was not what you would want it to be. We did have vehicular access prohibited and a nighttime curfew in place at the time of Hurricane Hannah's entrance to our community. I want to specifically point out that the vehicular access, the way we accomplished that on the beach is that through Scott Cross and his department, we set up sand berms. And those berms actually assisted in the storm surge. And I'll tell you what I mean by that. The parking lot and the Coastal Parks office was protected by this berm as were several access roads. This berm actually protected the washing away of further parking lots, roads, and damage to that park office. So when we talk about bittersweet, that was one of the bittersweet moments. We had to have that berm for the other disaster, COVID-19, but yet it was instrumental in providing some mitigating protection for the park office and the parking lot grounds. As everybody knows, we were in a moment where things were not what we wanted to be, whether you're talking about commerce and the oil and gas industry, petrochemical production being down, tourism and hospitality down due to COVID restrictions and due to COVID workforce diminishment. This was a difficult time and it continues to be a difficult time. But it was the first storm of the season and late last week, we began our preparations. And so on Friday at midnight, as the storm became moving from a depression to a tropical storm, we activated our emergency operations center. And we effectively on Friday at noon, closed certain accesses and those were mainly in the RV parks. We asked them to leave for their safety. We closed the beaches to pedestrians. We bermed and fortified any of those access points that needed so. And I believe all in all, we take, we took all those necessary precautions to protect life and property. And the best part was people followed those instructions and I do believe lives were saved. I said this in the press conference yesterday, that when people heeded the instructions, the consequences were good. We had no loss of life in Nuaces County due to Hurricane Hannah, and that is the best result that anybody could have asked for. And so in my lifetime, this was the strongest surge I've ever seen. And that has been confirmed for me this morning by the National Weather Service, who confirmed this storm surge. And Scott, I don't even know if you've seen this yet, I believe was 5.47 feet, which was higher than Ike in 2008, which was an incredible storm surge, I believe of 4.3 feet. It was compounded by the tides, which were high, and of course, severe rain bands. And unlike wind and rain, really little can be done to prepare for a storm surge. But that storm surge is much more than a rising water level and it also brought very serious high rip currents. The obvious concern for Nuaces County at the time was flooding due to high water level. And we were really very concerned about the rural areas that have really typical flooding associated with heavy rains. And we were making all the preparations with small towns throughout Nuaces County to be prepared for flooding. We asked people to stay home and they did. Sometimes you have these hidden dangers, these latent effects of being, as I said, on the wrong side of a storm. And it brought that wave action quite high. And so what happened with that water level rising so high is it revealed some of the issues that are, you know, not foreign to us, but it really does reveal its inherent crisis, if you will, which no greater demonstration of that than North Beach. And I don't want to de-minimize North Beach, but I'm going to concentrate today on coastal. But I do want to recognize the damage and the flooding that was all the way from Aquarium to Rincon at North Beach. Just extensive flooding and really terrific erosion revealed from, from an aerial view. And it does highlight the need for a long-term engineering solution. And I really do mean this. I look forward to working with the city, the state, and the county to make certain, multiple counties actually, that we can do everything we can to mitigate storm surge. There is a velocity zone and it can be mitigated with proper engineering solutions and we need to get after it. We need to make this a high priority. So waves basically hit where they normally don't hit and they hit at higher intervals. And piers and decks and bulkheads like my own at my home and up and down Corpus Christi that had piers and saw the destruction of those piers are part of the Hurricane Hannah victims. What you need to understand is the greater the surface area, the more energy it absorbs. And it brings that waves higher up on the beach and it carves out the sand. And so from an aerial view, I have to tell you that I had the opportunity to fly with the United States Coast Guard and the erosion is just truly significant. Again, that's what that wave action does. Think of it as a big wave, a big amount of energy just carving out that sand, almost munching into those dunes. So the dune line is no longer the same dune line that we had prior to Hannah. And the beach line is no longer the same beach line that we had higher, prior to Hannah. And that's what erosion is. And so the sand has been carved away, the parking lots have been destroyed, and there's going to be a need for extensive cleanup and restoration. We do have extensive debris onshore and offshore. There's a lot of marine debris and it will require restoration and renourishment, a complete parking lot reconstruction. I want to share with you the visible damage quickly and then I'd like to have some of the other folks that I have here that want to address this concern that we have, which is the damage from, at Bob Hall Pier. The T-head has been broken off. This is a 1,000 linear foot pier with a T. Left and right, that T has been broken off and the deck panels had been forced up as well, all along the path. The railings, power lines, and light poles have been destroyed and there could be unknown damage structurally underneath. The structural integrity at this moment is in question and we're going to have to have a thorough engineering analysis in order to answer whether or not this pier has good structure still. Jacobs Engineering had just completed for the county and it's been on Commissioner Chesney and my desk since July 7th, literally just two weeks ago, when we received this report. And, and of course, we now have a baseline to understand structure because Jacobs had just completed this work. There's going to be an extensive beach cleanup that's necessary. Again, underwater debris needs to be removed. You have massive piles of concrete down below. You have to get the facilities repaired. We need to replace some of the, I'm going to call them the, the isolated components that are part of services, like trash cans and, and different signage that got washed away. Beach restoration and renourishment needs to be a part of our engineering effort. And to do that, we're going to be working with the General Land Office on renourishment. Funding is going to be an important component to all of this. And, and I want to assure you that Commissioner Chesney and I, we're going to do everything in our power, along with our state representatives, Chairman Hunter, Chairman Arredo, Senator Inohosa, and Colcorus. We're going to work as a team to identify sources of funding so that we can do what everybody wants us to do, and that is rebuild. Let me tell you what's going to happen first. We're going to fly some drones, very sophisticated drones. I think this will happen Wednesday or Thursday. That might be tomorrow. This is a special drone made available to us through our pre-positioned contracts that we have in the county with Texas A&amp;M and Lone Star Unmanned Aircraft System. Dr. Miller, we're grateful to you and Texas A&amp;M, Chancellor Sharp for letting us utilize these specialized drones that have a special type of feature that doesn't allow it to really hit surfaces. It creates a halo effect, so you can fly it even when you can't see it. So I think this is going to be a very important part of analysis. It will happen this week. Then we can probably get divers in the water next week, early, and the engineers will begin their analysis of structural integrity to these piers. We will initiate a cleanup with Crowder Golf with the help of the General Land Office. That is the name of the company that will do debris removal. There is also a secondary company that will be employed for the purposes of monitoring. These are the types of processes that FEMA require. So removing damage, loose components on the pier, removing surface and underwater debris, all of these things are going to be taking place almost immediately. Now, I want to have Scott Cross come up here and let me just kind of finalize by answering one important question. Is pedestrian access open at this time in and around Bob Hall Pier? The answer is no. Let me explain. First of all, the most important thing we can do right now is to assess the damage, to remove the debris, and most of all, make certain that this area is safe. It has been deemed unsafe by multiple sources. It's unsafe by the engineers that we brought out there yesterday morning at this time. Scott Cross as Director of Coastal Parks, myself, our Nuaces County Public Works Team have found large, you know, pieces of wire and rebar and all kinds of opportunities to get hurt. There are large, very large chunks of concrete and asphalt and nothing, nothing as it is, as it should be. And so for these reasons, there is going to be a stretch of beach that we need to deem a hot zone. That is, it is not safe to enter. And I'd like to be able to have Scott come up and show you exactly where this area is going to be. And here's where I need your help. I need your help because this is an important, iconic, I've said this 10 times already, beloved place that we all go. And I know we want to see it restored as soon as possible. And the way that can happen is if we get really a proper, I guess, ring, identify where all this debris is, get it removed quickly, and make certain that the engineers and the park officials can come in and do the analysis that needs to get done. And so I'm going to pass the microphone to Scott Cross. He's going to outline the access roads for you because that's a good marker for you. I don't want you to worry if you don't understand it. We're going to post it on our website and we're going to create very good signage. We just need your cooperation and your patience because together, we are going to weather yet this storm as well. And I know that we can build more resilient than ever before. So Scott, will you show everybody? And then for the cameras, we'll ask you to zoom in and we'll also provide you a copy of this as well.
Okay. Thanks Judge. I'm going to pull this away so y'all can hear me better. So this is Access Road 4. This is 5. This is the main entrance and this is Access Road 6. You can see two red lines here. This first red line is the northernmost boundary of the Bob Hall Pier parking lot. This red line to the south is the southernmost boundary. What we're going to do immediately is we're going to take this whole zone in between these two red lines right here. This is the debris minefield. This is where I have all kinds of dangerous debris in this area. Some of this, most of this debris right in here is a result of the parking lot getting torn up. Some of it, we not sure yet. We've got some debris from the end of the T-head, the pier that's out in the water along in the surf zone and probably out towards the end of the pier. So we're going to permanently close until we can get this debris mitigated and removed in between these two, two lines right here. So that means that there is absolutely no public entrance or use of this space until we get it secured and cleaned up. And like the judge said, we have already executed with Crowder Golf, the debris removal contractor, and they're, they're, they're getting ready to go and get on, onsite to help us remove it. The end of the T-head, just for y'all to know, was 159 feet long and so 16 feet wide. So we lost 159 feet, linear feet of, of the pier right there that we know of. We don't know how many stress fractures radiate back to the walkway out, but we'll get all that taken care of with the engineers. And, but I need y'all's cooperation. You'll still be able to come out the main entrance and you'll still be able to go north towards Access Road 4 with your pedestrian access right now. After August 1st, pending the remove, eliminating the vehicle ban, you'll be able to go out and go north. You'll be able to go out Access Road 6 and you'll be able to drive and walk down, drive down after August 1st, walk down south into the Clayboro County portion. But we want to keep everybody out of here for their, their safety and so we can work and do what we need to do. And it's going to take a while, but we're going to, we're moving fast on it. That's a good judge.
So I would like to call Commissioner Chesney up and followed by Chairman Hunter to make a few comments. And then also, there was a very important, I must have gotten 20 emails about two different subject matters, quickly. You saw visually some images of trash cans, water barrels, and porta-potties. Those were not Nuaces County elements. And so I want you to make certain that you understand that those were not Nuaces County. And however, we have found the source and I need you to know that they were not full of trash and they were not full of anything at all. None of those items had any kind of waste or trash or litter. It's very important for you to understand that I'm certain up and down the beach, everybody made their best efforts, but there were some that the surge just took away. They did not get moved significantly farther, far enough, but I think that all efforts were made. And again, those were not Nuaces County items. And I believe that in the, in the light most favorable, given the fact they were all empties, it was nothing more than a, a storm surge that moved an item like it moved many items of debris. So having said that, the last item that was brought up with tremendous interest was whether or not we had the opportunity to remove planks to allow for the water, for the surge to come through. Answer, we did not. That would have taken about a seven-day notice. Those planks can be removed, so those of you smart engineers out there, by degree or just by good practical common sense knowledge, you're right, those planks can come up. But this storm developed and intensified within 12 hours. Nobody predicted this type of storm surge and we would have had to have seven days. We literally saw this storm move from a depression to a tropical storm to a hurricane within 30, 24 to 36 hours. And so what I would say to you is, you know, obviously, we all lament Bob Hall Pier's damage. And what we need to do is stand strong, stand unified in its recovery and getting it rebuilt. Commissioner Chesney, I look forward to working with you on that very issue.
Thank you Judge. Wanted to also provide, Scott Cross gave me this. This is a, this, this is the section that he is talking about that was taken down off the pier. And I, and I wanted to touch on a couple of things, if I could, in regards to what Judge Canales has said that I think is very important. My information is, is that the pier was designed to heave and that those panels were decide, were designed to go up in cases of surges so that it would not put undue pressure on the structure. As the judge indicated, we would have had, have seven to 10 days' notice and then we would have had to decide, is it worth using our resources to save a pier if we had seven to 10 days' notice or to save our people and to save things that were more practical? That pier was designed to take storms. It was designed to be able to handle strong surges. As the judge also reported, the report that we recently got showed some maintenance needed to be done, but not structural maintenance necessarily and that the pier was in a structurally good condition. So we will start to work on rebuilding this. We will do everything we can to make sure that this pier is rebuilt. The judge and I and others, we have grown up in this community, we grew up on this pier. We are very well aware of the importance, the importance of this, as she said, iconic pier. We do not believe that there's any reason that that pier cannot be rebuilt. We also do not believe there is anything that could have been done differently to save that pier because of the storm surge that was so significant. There was nothing like this in Hurricane Harvey. People may say, well, nothing like this happened in Hurricane Harvey. The surge was completely different in Hurricane Harvey than it was in this hurricane and that needs to be noted. So again, we will work to get this rebuilt and to get this done as quickly as possible. It will take some time. You don't go to federal government and agencies like that and expect things to happen overnight. But I assure you, as the commissioner that represents that area, and I've had that same commitment from the judge and State Representative Hunter I have talked to as well and then others that have committed to help us do whatever it takes to get that rebuilt. The important message is, no loss of life in Nuaces County. No loss of life. There's tons of rumors floating in this community. Oh my gosh, every time something happens, there's a rumor. They could have done this, they could have done this. What I, what I've seen, what I've looked at, and, and I don't have anything to do with the Emergency Operations Center, so this isn't me trying to protect myself. I'm not in the emergency management group. But what I can see is, everything was done that could have been done to get this done as quickly as possible. The National Weather Service didn't project this to be as heavy a duty as a storm as it was until very late and everything was done as quickly as can be. My last message is, and again, I want to reiterate, those panels were to, could have gone up, come back down, heaved, and it would have saved the structure. To be able to get those off would have been unbelievable effort and we would have had to start seven to 10 days prior to the storm and it would have cost us, I don't know how much, to do as well. So that was not a practical thing and it was not designed to be deconstructed. It was designed to take the heave and so that could be done. The last point I want to make is, please stay away from this part of the beach. If you go out there, and I was out there Sunday observing it, I went out there Friday before the storm and Sunday after the storm, and Coastal Park staff and the constables were doing a great job and CCPD was doing a great job of keeping people off. Please just stay away from this part of the beach. Please don't go out there because we're not going to let you on right now. This is no, this is no conspiracy theory attempt to close the beach forever and ever. It is an attempt to keep you safe and to keep that part of the beach safe so that we can get it fixed up and get you back out there as fast as possible. We need Michael Mays to open. We need that pier to open. We need that beach to open. And believe me, nobody wants the beaches opened quicker or faster than I do. But we have to make sure you're safe. And there are, there are chunks of asphalt the size of this room that the Coastal Parks was out there working on and they did a great job of doing that. So please, stay away from that part of the beach. You won't be let on. Don't put extra work on these folks that are really trying to do what they can to keep it safe for you. Thank you, I appreciate it. If anybody has any questions, you can always call my office at 888-0268 and we will do our best to keep you informed on everything that's going on. Thank you Judge.
Chairman Hunter, after this press briefing, you and I are going to have the privilege of going to sit with our governor and with Chief Nim Kidd, head of Texas Department of Emergency Management. I know that we're going to need your help. I know that we're going to need state resources. I know I can count on you. Would you be so good as to come up here and, and give us a few words about how the state can be a good advocate? And I know you actually saw Bob Hall Pier and maybe you can share your impressions. It's pretty, it's, it's a wow, isn't it, when you get there?
Thank you Judge and Commissioner Chesney, thanks. Yesterday, I want to thank Scott Cross and the sheriff for joining me out at Bob Hall Pier on the island. And there is damage, there's destruction. It shows you the strength of a hurricane. Now let me make a comment. We did not dodge a bullet. Anybody that says that we dodged a bullet, we did not. This was a hurricane Category 1. According to the National Weather Service, it was six miles per hour less than a Category 2 hurricane. That is severe. According to the weather experts, we're about three weeks earlier than normal for storm season. We've already had over seven named storms. They're predicting an above-average season. My point is, we did well. The community did well. But let's hope that others don't come this direction with named storm titles. Now Bob Hall Pier is a coastal treasure and it needs to be helped, fixed for our coastal residents. And you know, I look at your seals, state of Texas, county of Nuaces, that's the teamwork. This needs to be teamwork of federal, state, county, city to get Bob Hall Pier back. And one of my roles, Judge, is to fight for this area, to get all the help and resources we can. The legislative delegation will back up our county and cities. It's time that we show everybody the strength and the need for the coast of Texas. So I'm glad to be invited today. You have our commitment to fight for the coastline. Bob Hall Pier needs to be fixed. And to me, we have as many tourists enjoying this and out-of-towners joining this as we do residents. So to me, this is a state, local, federal obligation. Glad to be here, glad to support, but let's keep watching the weather.
No doubt. I also want to share that there are still other treasures in Nuaces County, places where you can enjoy fishing on piers. And I'm glad to report that Horace Caldwell Pier, at least from aerial inspection and from speaking with local officials, looks like it did not have that same type of damage. However, I do want to ask my colleague and friend, I would like to make certain that we can have underwater inspections done of Horace Caldwell Pier as well, just to make certain that we also, you know, do our double check. Here in Nuaces County, safety is always going to be measured with the top priority. So I want to share with you that our work begins and it will be a consistent work. We are not going to have days where we forget about it. There's not going to be times where teams won't show up. I want to thank Scott Cross, literally from Friday night when we went into EOC, up until, you know, the moment that he and I got to see that devastation, you know, together yesterday. I mean, it's, it's no doubt that he has his work cut out for him and his team, but he is up to the task. He understands- He understands the coast, not only as a biologist, but as truly almost a steward of Texas's greatest treasure, the Gulf Coast beaches. And so, I know that when I say "thanks," he knows that I mean it. I truly, really want to give thanks to our entire emergency operations write-out team, to Coastal Parks in particular, to Juan Pimentel and Public Works, and everybody who made such an effort. I want to talk just quickly, and then we'll end, to take your questions, about how important it is to make good decisions based on good data. On Friday night at midnight, we all came up here as part of our EOC team. People said, "What are you doing that for? Storm's not gonna hit till the next afternoon. Isn't that a little eager?" By 7:00 AM that morning, the surge had really come in, and we were watching in real time what should've been a preliminary shot on the beach by the Weather Channel, wound up being the action shot of the destruction that was the tea on Bob Hall Pier at 7:00 AM. 12 hours before it made landfall is when the destruction began. So, I believe that the good decisions that we have made as a collective force here in Oasis County have really driven good consequences. And so, I wholeheartedly agree. The story today is that we fared well because there was no loss of life first and foremost, because there was no rural flooding that could've been devastating to our resources, to our people, to really just our way of life in the agricultural community. And yes, we have identified some areas that we know are problematic and need to be addressed, like North Beach. But our coast really took the brunt of it. And if you think about it, that coast protects us all, doesn't it? It really is the island that protects all of us in the inner urban center of Corpus Christi. And so, because she protected us so well, I think it's only fitting that we pay her back in kind. And so, I will be asking the governor today for all the help that he can give us in order to help us identify the right resources, and I will be working across the board, Democrats, Republicans, independents. We're one team here in Oasis County, and I'm proud of that. So, I look forward to your questions. I know you have a lot of specific engineering questions, and I will tell you that it is our intention to be as transparent as possible, even though you will not have pedestrian access to the beach. If I can work with Scott Cross and we can put a beach cam out there, I would like to do that. And you can see the process as it takes place. But, really, please help us, help your favorite local tourist spot on the Gulf Coast, Bob Hall Pier, get back to health. She's definitely ill right now, and it is like having a family member in a serious medical condition. So, let's wish her well and a speedy recovery. And I know that we will be able to bring you more detailed information about the structural integrity within the next two weeks. We're ready to take any questions. I know we've gone off the air with CC Texas, but we're still live on our other platforms. So, I'm happy to take any questions, or Lisette, we can do our one-off in Spanish whenever you say.
Judge, I have one question.
Yes.
We're just gonna have to, y'all have to front the money for these repairs and then get reimbursed, and do you have enough in reserves to comfortably cover that?
So, those are all great questions. So, yes, we do have a healthy reserves. One of the things that really the Commissioner's Court made it a priority was to restore the health of our reserves. We are currently sitting at approximately, close to probably not quite 24% of operating revenues, but almost there. This is up from 17% in 2018. So, you can see that we've done a very good job at $24 million of having a very healthy reserve. We also believe that the underwater inspections, we have dollars in our capital improvement plan, so that is also an opportunity. Plus, the health, the financial health of your county is still very strong. We have excellent bond ratings, and we have the ability to borrow because we do not have a high debt profile. So, for all those good reasons, plus the opportunity, if we meet the minimum requirements, and Todd and I are gonna have to work on that, hopefully we'll meet the minimum requirements because FEMA, in order to trigger that reimbursement, you have to have so much damage. And so, we're gonna know that here very soon. But, you know, like every capital improvement, you make decisions, and these are decisions as to how they affect our community. Bob Hall affects our community, affects our ability to provide for great coastal parks, is part of our economic development profile in tourism. It hosts 65 jobs out there with Michael Mays. It also serves as a great fishing pier, and fishing is essential, and we know that. And also, I think that one of the things that we just underscore is how important it is to our overall coastal management plan to have infrastructure like observation decks for observing wildlife and habitat. You don't know how to take care of something until you really look, study, and understand it.
Timeline on the repairs, worst-case scenario versus just needing to put the tiles back into place of Bob Hall Pier?
Right. So, let me address one thing, what I can tell you today, is that Scott Cross, and I really defer a lot to his expertise, we told May Nardone, the owner of Michael Mays, that she needs to prepare for 30 days at minimum to not be at her restaurant. We think we need at least 30 days to establish the analysis that needs to be done. From that point, repairs, you know, could take a while. But I will say that we don't know yet, it could be that the concrete underneath in those piers are great, and they may need some extra reinforcement. Until we have a thorough analysis, we're not gonna be able to estimate dollars and/or time. But I can say that when a county commits, like we did on a Monday morning, literally, where weather bans are still in the arena, we're out there, that gives you a sense of the urgency and the commitment that we have to get it done quickly.
Do we have an estimate of what time?
You know, we don't. A thousand-foot pier, if you were gonna reconstruct it, you know, new, could average anywhere from $5 to $10 million, depending on how you decided to build that pier. But, let me just say this, there could be great mitigating, you know, opportunities. There could be, as I said, great structure below. One thing I want us to be committed to is to build it stronger than ever. I was in high school in 1983. Were you in high school? No, I was just joking. I know that. We were in high school when that pier got built. So, you know, let's just say, it's not real old, but it ain't a spring chicken either. And so, it has lasted its test of time, and you should know that infrastructure has a timeline. Everything does. Roads do, bridges do, and piers are no exception. So, Mother Nature showed us her forces, and we will have to do our very best to respect that water took damage, created a severe amount of damage, and now it's time to find a way to structurally recreate that pier in a way that we now know would have to withstand. Probably, Scott, you had that 17 feet high? So, you had a 17-foot-high pier and a 6-foot surge on top of that. Think about that. So, we will be designing differently as all coastal communities design for resiliency in the future, Lisette.
Bueno quiero decir a toda la comunidad latina que este es un momento un poco triste para nosotros aquí en Condado de Nueces, pero también tenemos que agradecer que ningún persona perdió su vida en huracán Hannah. Hannah era una tormenta fuerte con una energía increíble poderosa, trayendo olas más de seis pies en nuestra costa, en nuestras playas hermosas. Especialmente muelle que se llama Bob Hall, estuvo una destrucción fuerte y hay mucho mucho daño en este momento para gente que tal vez tienen curiosidad, pero no deberían estar a ningún lado cerca de este muelle. Por qué? Porque hay mucha destrucción, hay mucho hierro, madera, líneas de electricidad, tubería, todo lo que es del muelle que se cayó en el agua. Perdimos parte de la, dicen la letra "T" porque es una muelle de casi mil pies que tiene, se cruza con más de 100 pies y 16 pies de ancho. Esta parte del "T" completamente cayó en el agua. Entonces, en este momento estamos dedicados a construir una nueva muelle, pero primeramente tenemos que hacer análisis, tenemos que entender qué construcciones vamos a necesitar para abrir de nuevo. Va a tardar un poco de tiempo, pedimos paciencia de la comunidad, pedimos que ustedes entiendan ahora está muy peligroso. Entonces vamos a cerrar un parte de los caminos del acceso al norte del muelle Bob Hall hasta el sur, al camino 6, el camino 6. Están cerrados, no vas a poder caminar porque es muy peligroso. El momento que podemos levantar toda la basura, tener completamente los ingenieros que vienen a ver cómo pueden repararlo, vamos a abrir de nuevo. Todavía vas a tener suficiente playa a tener acceso. Nosotros vamos a darte una mapa en nuestro website y también con una visión para que ustedes puedan ver qué parte exactamente está cerrado y qué parte puedes tener acceso. Quiero decir y agradecer todos que están en el parque ayudándonos cada día, primeramente el director Scott Cross y todos los empleados del Condado de Nueces que nos ayudó. También estoy acompañado aquí, comisionado Brent Chesney, también aquí estuvo con nosotros, representante, chairman Todd Hunter del Estatal de Texas. Los dos están dedicados a ayudarme a procurar los fondos, hacer todo lo que es necesario. Nosotros sabemos, ustedes le encantan ir a la pesca, ir surf, nadando, nomás caminando en la playa, es algo de nuestra vida, es icónico este lugar construido en 1983. Pero lo más importante es que nosotros estamos tiempo. Tiempo para entender lo que nos pasó. Pero lo que queremos decir es que este huracán Hannah aunque no destruyó, no nos inundó. El vientos no eran como Harvey. Era muy poderoso y hizo mucha destrucción en la costa y necesitamos construir de nuevo. Gracias.
Gracias Lisette. Thank you all for being here. Forgive me that I'm gonna run out. If you need me, I'm gonna take a few moments in my office and I can set up for more interviews. These are very worth having, and I would like to see if maybe we could get some X marks the spot. Oh, you did it. Okay. Those are, those are the. We really want people to understand what's closed, and we want them to understand that it's a temporary closure, that it's only while it's dangerous. Once we get it cleaned up and analyzed, the minute we can open it up, we're gonna do that. We thought today's press briefing was important because there was so much concern, so many questions about Bob Hall Pier. The minute we get the actual analysis, we'll invite the engineers to join Commissioner Chesney and I here in this very room, and they can present their findings. Thank you.
Can you get my picture?
Yes.
Can you get your picture?
Yes, I'm gonna get my glasses.
And then this one?
Um, hey Scott, you've got it marked. Is it better probably this one?
Yeah, probably the big that was marked there.
And this is our?
Yeah, that's the hot zone in between two red lines.
Aquí tengo yo una mapa de la playa y esta es la entrada de Padre Ballí. La entrada de Padre Ballí, este es el camino 22. Siempre gente quiere venir aquí en la entrada de Padre Ballí. Y puedes ver que este es el punto más norte, este es el camino número 6. Y en medio del número 6 y cerca del camino de la entrada es donde el lugar donde hay más basura peligrosa. Puedes ver el muelle aquí en el agua, puedes ver el "T" aquí a mero abajo, el "T" estaba completamente destruida. Entonces, las dos marcas rojas aquí quiere decir que esta zona no se puede caminar. Todavía, no puedes entrar por carro, por coche, pero todavía en las otras partes de la playa puedes caminar, puedes disfrutar, puedes hacer ejercicios, nadar, lo que sea. Pero esta zona, por favor, necesitamos su ayuda en tenerlo completamente prohibida para que dejarlos, todos los que van a ayudarnos limpiar y hacer los análisis, trabajar duro para que podemos abrir muy pronto. Entonces, otra vez, las marcas rojas en medio no se puede caminar en esta zona y no sabemos pero por 30 días al minimo. Gracias.
Judge, if I may. Special meeting Friday.